To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda. Motion to amend the agenda to add item eight K and item eight one, allowing action by council on these additional items. The items are consideration of your rural development loan resolution and a sewer revenue bond indebtedness. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Questions? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda related items? Do we have any citizens that like to comment on agenda related items? If we do, please limit your comments to five minutes. Yes. Please state your name and address.
Fourth Street. I see where you was gonna call those deer again. I asked you before, get a hold of the DNR, have them come up there and get rid of those deer. Them deer belong to the DNR, they don't belong to the city. I think that thirty thousand, that you, well, that ten now and twenty from last year could have been well spent in the city on roads and everything else. And we're going killing the deer. They were here first. Leave, leave the deer alone. But if you're gonna kill them, kill them all. Because I saw more fawns born this year than I did in the past twenty-five years. A lot of young ones out there. So that thirty or whatever they took last time. Would like a drop in Lake Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item removed from the consent agenda and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agendas tonight include approval amendments, payroll, invoices, consideration of ordinance twenty dash one, amending chapter eight, six, six, and eight, six, seven, consideration of zoning ordinance, amendment Z nineteen dash twenty-five, assembly, operation, and key street segments. Notification regarding next work session. Do I have a, at this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Under new business. Consideration of approving the Manistee City Five-Year Recreational Harbor Plan. The City of Manistee partners with the Manistee County Planning Department to draft a five-year recreational harbor plan. This document is necessary for the DNR when writing grants through the waterways program. The plan outlines and prioritized development plans for accessible, accessible waterway areas within the city limits. The plan was reviewed, approved by the Manistee Harbor Commission. At this time, council could take action to approve the city five-year recreational plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Did you get that?
Cooper and Pontiac.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of purchase of a election tabulator and a budget amendment to cover the cost. Due to the increase in absentee voters as a result of the passage of proposal three, the city clerk has determined a need to purchase an additional, additional tabulator for the processing of absentee ballots. At this time, council could take action to authorize a purchase of an election tabulator and the budget amendment to cover the cost. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Works Warriors snowmobile ride to utilize city streets for the snowmobile ride for the purpose of a fundraiser for Special Olympics. The ride would take place on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty. Works Warriors snowmobile ride would like to utilize city streets from the city limits to Red Apple to Cherry Road area, to the area behind the high school, commencing from there to the Moose Lodge. This ride would take place on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty, with the ride expected to arrive, with the riders expected to arrive in the city at approximately two P M and departing the city one to two hours later. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the request to use city services, parks, and streets for the Works Warriors snowmobile ride on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty, subject to department approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions?
I, I have one. If there isn't any snow on the roads that particular day, what's the option?
Jeff's gonna pick them all up and bring them up in dump trucks. They're gonna have different means of travel, they're not gonna utilize their slides to get up there. They're still gonna make the trip though.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into an agreement with the Manistee Downtown Development Authority through the City of Manistee Downtown Development Authority Service Agreement. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority is requesting consideration of entering into an agreement with the City of Manistee through the service agreement for enhanced and accelerated services for the upcoming year. The Manistee DDA approved the service agreement during the January eighth, two thousand and twenty board meeting after conversations with the Manistee DDA committee members and the City of Manistee staff. With the approval of the Manistee DDA and City of Manistee Service Agreement, the documents will be added to the current development and TIF plan amended up for adoption this spring. It should be amendment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this? I just have one comment. I would like to thank the DDA and city staff for the hours it was spent crafting this, this document. It took a lot of time and a lot of effort. I'd much appreciate. Anybody else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a bond authorizing ordinance twenty dash three for the issuance of sewer revenue bond series two thousand and twenty in the amount of four thousands, four million seven hundred thousand. The city is subject, is subject to the MDEQ NPDES permits that mandate a wet water correction action program to remove the last combined sewer overflow. This require, requirement and process toward, and progress towards completion has been discussed many times in the past council work sessions and meetings. A notice of intent resolution was approved by council on August twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen for the issuance of the debt to the finance, the finance, the needed activity to comply with the CAP. No reprimand petitions were filed, so the city can proceed with issuing additional debt. The series two thousand and twenty bond, which funds phase one A and phase one B for an overall CAP, are being funded by USDA Rural Development. The approval of the bond authorizing ordinance is necessary to authorize and proceed with the bond sale. The part where it says as an ordinance, two separate readings are required, I was informed by staff that that's not necessary. One, one reading is enough. At this time, council can take action to introduce bond authorizing ordinance twenty dash oh-three for the issuance of a sewer junior lien bank revenue bond series two thousand and twenty in the amount of four million seven hundred thousand. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Jeff, where are we gonna get all this money to pay him back? Is that over twenty years or forty years?
So, Councilmember Grabowski, these are rural development bonds, so they're at a very low interest rate and they're amortized over forty years. So, not sure the debt that we incurred over the last twenty years or twenty years ago to do some of the sewer separation projects is maturing. And so, the money that's freed up for those payments will go to service this debt. And as it stands right now, we're not anticipating any extraordinary rate increases to be able to cover this debt.
Okay. Did we lose some of these other bond things in the last year or something?
We pay them off each year, but the, the last payments will drop off this year. And then, we have a pretty dramatic drop, so we're able to pay for these other issuances that we need to do with the savings by not having, by having paid off those other issues.
Okay, I know all that twenty million and all that, that we authorized. Now we getting another four million.
Well, this, this four point seven is coming now, and then phase two originally was going to be around eighteen million, but some of that's gonna be a grant, so it'll be closer to fourteen million. That'll be coming in front of council, hopefully within the next three to five months. And that'll be the total project then. So at that point, we should be done having to issue any sewer debt for the Wet Weather Corrective Action Program. Yeah.
Any other questions? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution, resolution to vacate Olga Street. On March ninth, two thousand and nineteen, city council passed an action to vacate the south, the southern portion of Olga Street from midway block between Eighth Street and continuing to the remaining portion of the entire block of Olga Street, between Ninth Street and Tenth Street, including reserving any existing utility easements and future conveying or reserving of the city and easement over the north fifteen feet portion being vacated. To complete the vacation, a resolution needed to be passed. At this time, council could take action to approve the Olga Street resolution based on the documents descriptions above.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a sanitary sewer service agreement with Manistee Township. The city has negotiated a sanitary sewer service agreement with Manistee Township. It was approved by the township at the December two thousand and nineteen meeting. The agreement was negotiated over a several-year timeframe and comprehensively addressed city sewer services being provided in Manistee Township. At this time, council could take action to enter into a sanitary sewer service agreement with Manistee Township and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents or the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I thought we had a Manistee Township, don't we have sewers going out that way?
Yeah, we never finalized, go ahead, mister.
Well, Ed wants to talk about it, but you're, you're correct, we never finalized an agreement who's been in progress for about five years.
So, we had a very old, simple agreement with the township that didn't have many terms and conditions. It basically was a model that the previous city manager, Ben Minafaus, had set up. And as development has started to continue to grow out there in the township and the tribe ran their sewer line, and we negotiated the water agreement, the township and the city felt it was in both parties' interest to kind of memorialize the sewer agreement and get it on consistent terms and address a lot of the areas. So, we went back and forth on this for quite some time, and finally were able to come to an agreement, and we think it's a strong agreement and will help with development and help with the city's utility system.
So, as I understand, this is not going to have any additional impact on the sewer system we currently have, correct?
What do you mean by additional impact? There's no, there's no construction.
There's nothing else that, that has not already been included into, that's already being done, correct? There's no new sewer lines or anything as part of this, this is.
Not with this particular agreement. This kind of covers what's there right now and then sets the ground rules for what, you know, moving forward, how that can happen and what the charges and stuff will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a fifth amendment to the site lease with the new cellular wireless E C S L L C for an existing lease at the industrial park water tower. The city has an existing lease with the new cellular wireless P S C L L C for space at the industrial park water tower to accommodate cellular telephone antennas and related equipment. New cellular has made a request to add a generator to the site and slightly expand the lease premises. The city has negotiated a lease amendment with a six point five percent increase in rent. Annual rent will now be thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars with a two point five percent annual accelerator. At this time, council could take action to approve the fifth amendment to site lease with new cellular wireless P S C L L C and authorize the mayor to execute the documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions, discussion?
How many years is this new lease for?
The new lease doesn't extend the terms. Their existing lease is, goes for five-year periods, and then they have a number of extensions. And I, I think they're in their second five-year term, and then I think they have a couple more extensions. I'd have to go back and review. There's been five, five amendments to this lease. This original lease extends all the way back to when we had Dobson Cellular, if you remember when they were around. So, they don't like to like recodify those, they just keep doing amendments to them. So, they, they have a few years left, assuming they don't terminate it for whatever provisions they have available.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a recycle center agreement with Manistee Catholic Central School. The city currently operates a research, recycling center along Grochesci Drive in the city industrial park. Change in the commodities market for fiber products has increased the refuse expense by sixteen thousand per year. City's staff has been exploring opportunities to reduce costs. Manistee Catholic Central has agreed to host the city recycling center. The city would reduce fiber tipping fees by sixteen thousand, and MCC will receive new revenue from the program with Packing Corporation of America. This agreement was prepared by the city attorney and has been approved by MCC. At this time, council could take action to approve the recycling center agreement with Manistee Catholic Central and relocate the recycling center to the school along Twelfth Street, among, along Twelfth Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. So, all of the recycling is gonna be moved to MCC?
Yes. The, there's two forms of materials that we recycle, the co-mingled, which is the thirty-yard dumpster with metal and plastics. So, we've poured a pad down behind MCC in anticipation of this being approved, and we'll set that dumpster down at that location, and then the existing trailer will be used for the fiber delivery when people go down there. The existing recycling center will then be vacated with all those dumpsters and, and containers, and we plan to use that for cold storage then.
Okay, but are we still gonna be paying for that recycling of the metal and the plastic?
Yes, we still will, will have that on our, as an expense to the refuse fund, but we will be eliminating what it costs for us to have the, the paper processed.
And are we still gonna monitor the, like, if it's gonna be trashed or have the same?
Yes. Yep.
Are we putting cameras up there, is Catholic Central gonna do it?
We haven't had that discussion yet, although we are prepared to relocate our cameras if it's necessary.
Have, have we had any prosecution of people doing irregular dumping yet from the cameras?
I would not say we've had prosecution. We've had some individuals that have abused the program, that we've had discussions with, and we've had some failure with our cameras for the past, I don't know how many months, several months. So, our, our staff just checks it every day and cleans up anything that's left behind.
How about the yard waste and the, the compost? Is that still gonna be available at Catholic Central, or we have a different location?
Yeah, so the, the compost, the topsoil, we'll put a bin down there and make that available. The yard waste, we did not anticipate relocating down there because it's a lot more odorous and, and difficult. The brush bin that we put at the current compost facility turned out to be a great, very well-used by the residents, but it is impossible for us to process after that. You know, when you put your, your brush waste out on, on the curb, people are pretty accustomed to putting the large side of that branch out towards the street so the guys can grab them, pull them apart, and put them in the chipper. When they're in that bin, they're all mixed up, and it's, it's impossible to get apart. So, we've just been hauling those in bulk out to the, the compost facility just to naturally decompose. So, we don't anticipate making that available any longer.
Jeff.
Go ahead.
I noticed that the couch has gone from, you know, between Eighth and Ninth Street, but now they got carpeting and a bunch of bed mats or something. Did they, did they take them or give them to the slip?
The, the couch, after we were aware of it, we sent them a letter. This letter got their attention. They called back, we explained that it has to be removed, or that we would remove it and build the, the resident back. So, now we're going through the same process with the rest of it.
Are they stupid?
I wouldn't answer that question.
Okay.
I just have one quick question. When I pull in the recycle center, I see a sign that says for use by city of Manistee residents only. Is there any policing of that, or do we have any way we might police that? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm.
We've discussed that for years and years, and currently there is no authentification, authentication for people that use that. If we see somebody that's from the, the, one of the surrounding townships, we certainly have a con, conversation with them, but cur, currently there's no way to monitor that.
Anything else? Please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The following applications have been received. Oh, I'm sorry. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Airport Authority, Border Review, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Citizen Council, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Parks Commission, PEG Commission, Tree Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Where all appointments require a motion, second by council, a motion, second, and council vote to support. Nominees for, for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on a nominee until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Border review, one vacancy term is in alternate, ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-two, shall be a taxpayer, elector of the city, who is an owner of property assessed for tax in the city, and at the time of their appointment, are either elected nor appointed officials of the city. This is a council appointment, you have one applicant, council, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to have Angela M. Talbert of five, two, three, Second Street as consider this vacancy.
The term ending.
Ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
Anything else? Seeing none, I believe we can take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
What do I say?
Yes or no?
My second? Oh. Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Parks Commission, I'll be making, I won't be making any nominations tonight. Historic District, District Commission, there are two vacancies, one term ending two twenty-eight, twenty-one, and one term ending two twenty-eight, twenty-three. One member is, is desired to meet professional qualification standards. Council, you have two, you have two people. What's your wishes?
I nominate Lee Trucks.
Have a nomination for Lee Trucks. Don't need a second, and we'll, any discussion, any comments?
Which term?
Which term?
Which term, sorry.
I'm sorry. Two twenty-eight, twenty-three.
Thank you. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky. Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Do you have one more?
I make a motion to, uh, nominate Deborah Granache of three four three Second Street for the term ending two twenty-eight twenty twenty-one.
Any comments, discussion? Seeing none. Seeing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. For new business, we have a consideration of a USDA Rural Development Loan Resolution. This is under the amended agenda. For four million, four hundred thousand and three hundred thousand for a sewer revenue bond indebtedness. The city is subject to the M D E Q N P D E S permit that mandates a wet water correction action program to remove the last combined sewer overflow. This requirement and process towards completion of this has been discussed many times at past council work sessions and meetings. The Series Twenty Twenty Bonds, which funds Phase One and Phase One B of the overall C A P, are being financed by USDA Rural Development. The USDA requires loan resolution as part of the financing process. At this time, council could take action to approve USDA Rural Development Loan Resolution in the amount of four million, four hundred thousand and three hundred thousand of a sewer revenue bond indebtedness. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please take the role.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution to approve the City of Manistee Harbor Commission Five-Year Recreational Harbor Appointment. The State of Michigan requires that the governing body approve and support a five-year recreational harbor plan adopted by the Manistee Harbor Commission. At this time, council could take action to approve the City of Manistee Harbor Commission Resolution for adoption of the Manistee City Five-Year Recreational Harbor Plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please take the role.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski. Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Otis's Communications Announcement, there's a report from the Manistee Recreational Association. At this time, Ms. Carpenter will report on the activities of the Manistee Recreational Association. Any questions the council may have regarding their activities? Welcome.
Hi, do you want this? Or your PowerPoint? Press the down to advance. So, I'm Stephanie, I'm the new executive director of the Manistee Recreational Association. Um, and so this is just a brief PowerPoint of what we have done in the last year for two thousand nineteen. Um, so, this is our first slide, which is all of our programs that we've currently offered. Um, just to highlight a couple of those. Um, our ski and snowboard program that we do with Crystal Mountain, um, which we recently have just started that for this season. Um, and then first, second grade, third, fourth basketball. Um, we also are very big into soccer, um, along with baseball, tennis, tai chi. Um, we do currently serve a bunch of kids with our swim program. Um, we did a great job with our flag football. Um, I know we were able to serve a little bit more adults this last year for flag football. Um, and then just a Falling for Fitness and Spring Running Club. So, our two thousand nineteen participation numbers, um, individual particip- participation total was nine hundred and nine, which equals one thousand four hundred and forty-eight for program registration. Um, this was a slight decrease, um, in participation for baseball and Little League, but we were able to add first and second grade basketball. And that was just a little bit lower than our two thousand eighteen numbers. Um, the City of Manistee had a total of three hundred and twenty-eight individual participations, which, oh. Um, and then here is a list of some of our sponsors for two thousand nineteen. Blarney Castle Oil, um, Family Chiropractic, B O S Manufacturing, Boyer Agency, Brian, Brian Superior Seal Coating, um, Cat knees Customs, Chapo's North Side Bar, Green Acres Lucky Lizard, Onecamalions, Waters Edge Dentistry, just to name some of them. Um, and then every year we present an award for, um, Charles E. Scheidel. Um, and last night we did that for our award presentation. Um, and we always select one individual and then one organization that has really supported the M R A, but not only done some community, um, work. And so, this year we, um, we picked Wendy Adamski. Um, and then for our organization, we did Waters Edge Dentistry. And then, if you guys are not aware, um, the M R A does a really good job by offering scholarships for anybody that just doesn't have the funds to participate in any of our programs. And so, in two thousand nineteen, we were able to provide scholarships to thirty-four families, which totaled sixty-nine registrations for a total of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. So, that's great. Um, and then just a brief look into two thousand twenty. Um, we will probably increase overall program registration. Um, specifically looking at more adult programming, um, senior programming, and then definitely some more community outreach programs that we're starting to explore. And then that's it. Any questions?
So, Stephanie, uh, how long have you been with the M R A? And could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I have been with the M R A for just about a month. Um, I came from Traverse City, Michigan. I worked at the Y M C A as one of their directors for the past four years. Welcome, thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
How, I just have a quick question, maybe you're, haven't been in this long enough to tell me the answer to this. How do you determine need for someone who needs a scholarship?
Uh, right now we have a form that they can fill out, um, which we, to be honest with you, we've never denied anybody for a scholarship. Um, but there is a form in the office that they can come and they can fill out. Um, it talks, it asks for their financial statements, I believe, um, and then we just judge it off that.
Now, is this something that you publicize quite?
Mm-hmm.
Get it out there that this is, okay.
Yep, we encourage everyone to partic- like, to take advantage of it. We don't ever want to hear that a child can't participate in a program due to lack of funding. Um, it seems that we will always find a way for them to get involved somehow.
That's good news.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. I think we're down to concerns and comments. Am I missing anything? Okay. Um, citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, and areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments. Limited to five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Does anyone like to make comments tonight? Seeing none. We go to officials and staff. Mr. Taylor.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Wilson.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
City clerk.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Mr. Bradford.
Nothing more, your honor, thank you.
City engineer.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Platy.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Who else is hiding back there? Um, how about public safety?
Take up a little more time since Ed flamethrowed one meeting here recently by in thirty minutes. Makes Jeff feel home. No, I just wanted to talk about, a little bit about the fire department. Uh, last month, the month of December, we had, I think it was a hundred and thirty-eight documented, uh, runs that we, uh, we did, which is way above our normal average. We're usually around ninety or just shy of ninety per month. That was a pretty banner month for, we were very, very busy. And it seems like it's continuing on here in January, the, um, the guys are doing a wonderful job over there. Over the span of, uh, forty-eight hours, we had, um, thirteen transports, a fire and, and filer that we assisted with and, um, a small burnt food issue here. So, we're keeping very, very busy over at the fire department, very proud of their work, so just wanted to pass it along.
That house that burned up on Davis Street, is, do you have no insurance or nobody owns it or?
That's correct.
Oh, it just sits there?
This is going to be one of the processes we're going to be addressing through blight, actually, at some point.
Okay.
Thank you.
D P W.
About to, your honor.
D P W. Wanted to make sure you heard me. Okay.
Nothing.
Could I ask you, on these stun guns that the State of Michigan lifted the ban on, should we be creating ordinance on that or what, what's your ideas on that, baby?
You have to enlighten me a little bit more about this, they lifted what?
They lifted the ban on having stun guns now that people can buy them and...
Personal stun gun? I'd have to do a little more research on that to give my best opinion.
It was in the paper.
Yeah, I mean, with your guys and going out with these damn things now.
It wouldn't be something I would want to encounter if someone...
Yeah. I just was wondering, you know, should we be creating that ordinance?
I, that doesn't mean that Jeff can carry one either, does he?
No, he can't have one. Thank you.
He always does.
I have nothing, we're adjourned with a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion, we're adjourned.